Welcome to Santa Barbara Talks with Josh Molina. It's such a pleasure today to be here with Santa Barbara City Planning Commissioner John Bauckey, who I've been covering for a few years now, watching one of the most, you know, one of the smartest planning commissioners, very serious and deliberate, and someone who I enjoy watching because when he talks, it's very quotable and it's smart and very knowledgeable. So it's going to be a pleasure to have this conversation with you today, John. How are you?
I'm good. Nice to see you, Josh.
Yeah.
Good morning. Hopefully you got enough coffee?
Yeah, I have a cup of coffee right here. So let's dive in and I have a feeling that we're gonna get into it very quickly when we're gonna talk about Lacumbra Plaza and everything that is going on with two separate housing developments that are essentially competing with each other now with no specific plan. The planning commission recently saw the Sears project, right? Kennedy Wilson, these Orange County developers came in, they presented their plan, concept review, and it was a very lively discussion. So John, let's start right away. Let me hit you with the hard question. What do you think of this? I believe it's 443 units. Kennedy Wilson, it's a, we're gonna go where the Sears building was around the parking lot, sort of that side of Lacumbra Plaza. From what you've seen so far, what do you think of this proposal?
Well, I, 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 I think it's a project that, you know, they came in the door looking at the city's requirements based on current state, state statute. And, you know, brought in a project that, which isn't Santa Barbara-ish, we'll call it that. It, but it's, you know, what you would get if you're trying to maximize the return on, on, on the investment. So I mean, this is a developer-driven maximum yield type project in compliance with our current ADU code. So I mean, that, that's what we've got. The architecture firm's actually one I've known for many, many years since the eighties. You can even go to their Christmas party. So they're very, very, very skilled. It's just the decision right off the bat to do what I, what's called a Texas rap or a rap project is probably the biggest issue. It's, it, it's bulk mass and scale is the biggest issue with the project. And well, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on your point of view in this community, you know, the city had made decisions in the general plan process to, you know, put a lot of units in what is now Lacumbra Plaza. So I mean, we're, we're dealing with that, especially with the context of what the state has done from a legislative point of view. So, you know, the, the, my, my, my thought process on the, on the project is it's, it's got a lot of units. It could even have more, honestly. The problem is it doesn't, it, it doesn't feel like Santa Barbara. It doesn't have Santa Barbara traits to it, we'll call it that. It's very, very, very big and bulky.
Yeah.
And again, that, that's where the first, first issue is there. And then it goes in, we can get into all the other problems with Lacumbra Plaza. But, you know, it, it, how that is going to work with the Taylor project and, and the mall together is where this is really concerning because, you know, as you mentioned in your intros, there was a specific plan contemplated. It was contemplated in the, the general plan analysis that they would, you know, we would defer all the technical issues and conversations to this plan and work it all out. Well, that's isn't happening now. And it's interesting with the state's adoption of SB three thirty, whether or not, even if we had done it, whether it could be enforced. Because the timing of that was in, I believe in two thousand and nineteen and, you know, so the city didn't even get around to asking for the money to do a specific plan until much later than that. And the law now is basically you can't imply old, you know, rules that have come in since the adoption of, if, if somebody's come in and done a pre-application, which is very, very problematic because that's really early in the process, but it locks the rules in. And in the case of SB three thirty, the, the city actually, you know, you know, gun what SB three thirty is asked, which is to adopt objective design standards, but those standards can't be, you know, enforced because in both the Taylor case and then, and then the Sears project, that they've applied for a, a preliminary application review process and been deemed complete on that. And that locks all the rules in when they made that application. So, you know, we're really stuck in a really, honestly, a very unfortunate situation.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a difficult thing. And just so to lay the context, we've all been to Lacumbra Plaza. Right now you have Macy's facing State Street. You got the Big Dip, the big parking lot. And then on the other side, you have the Sears building and it's not Sears anymore. I believe it's a mattress and furniture store.
Mattress mites and.
Yeah. There's a couple of uses there. The old service repair shop is not there anymore. So we're looking at, at some point, a dramatic change where we have the, the Taylor family developing the Macy's side with something like six hundred and eighty units. And then you have these other developers who, who built the Estancia on State Street and they want to build four hundred and forty-three. So we're talking eventually, and, and I don't know, within the next six to eight years, Macy's lease goes through two thousand twenty-eight. We're gonna see more than a thousand units. That's the goal. Apartments. And we think about that is what that means for congestion, traffic congestion around Lacumbra Plaza. Of course, if you try to go in that area at peak hours, it's, it's already very impacted. We need the housing, of course, but these developers are coming in with sort of lots of units and minimal affordable housing or, or, you know, affordable, meaning sort of moderate or different layers of below market rate. So if we just sort of look out into the future, that's what's at stake here is no one is saying, well, I mean, there may be some people in the community saying, don't build anything. But, you know, the people know we have to build something and it's a good thing to build something. The challenge here is how do we build it in a way that makes sense with the minimal impacts on the community from an infrastructure perspective, from a, a traffic mobility perspective? That's the challenge. And so you've got two developers who apparently aren't really working well together right now based off of what I've heard in that planning commission meeting. And they're both going to the city separately. And that's the position the city's in. And then you throw in the state law and what you said, that they locked in these development standards or the amount of review the city can have. And, you know, unless they want to voluntarily work with the city, it's a tough situation, you know? And there's no specific plan that sort of tries to negotiate and extract the most and everybody gets what they can. So you would use the, the word, John, disaster at that planning commission meeting. What do you mean by that when you talk about this project?
Well, okay, you, you've, you've got the situation with the state currently in, in, you know, SEQA, SEQA is one of the few things that's left in the process because, you know, if we can't even enforce standards that we recently adopted, which honestly were designed to address Lacumbra Plaza, if there wasn't a specific plan, and there's a section in the objective design standards called large sites, I would point everybody to that because if we follow that, which is sort of the city's basic rules of sort of like, okay, and, and the objective design standards were developed with the thought that if somebody wasn't going through the discretionary review process, this would be something that, going through this and meeting the requirements, you'd find it to be something that would be acceptable. Sort of our minimum acceptable standard. Unfortunately, because as I discussed with you earlier, those were developed fairly recently because it takes time to do it and it's actually fairly complicated stuff because they're very prescriptive. They basically say, you, thou shall do exactly this and you do that, we're happy. But that's been adopted. And if we followed that for Lacumbra Plaza, I think the community would be happy with the end result because it would at least meet our minimum standards. But we can't even enforce that now because they came out of the city's reaction to the state law. Thou shalt do things without discretion. As far as, you know, your standards can't be guidelines. And Santa Barbara's got this long, long history of architectural review way, way back. And we're one of the first cities to have architectural review processes, which has always been sort of our way of getting it to be Santa Barbara. So we go through this proper, fairly elaborate process with very, very talented folks on our architectural review boards. And the end result ends up what we have. The state's taken a lot of that away.
Right.
So, so what we have now is we got projects that are in that discretionary process, but all we have really is our zoning standards to apply, plus whatever the architectural review board or the HLC, depending on where the project is, can morph these things to become something that's acceptable to the community. And so, you know, what we have now is this sort of the SEQA process is pretty much, and the state's now recently even talking about, you know, when they describe things as infill development and in their definition, probably Lacumbra Plaza would be considered infill, that, that you, the SEQA wouldn't even apply to that. And so there isn't, you know, the question is where is this process in which we come up with something that works at that particular location for the kinds of intensities in which the city's general plan calls for it? And, 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 you know, the usual process that you go through this whole, you know, fairly sophisticated environmental review process. And this, this town used to be, you know, there, there's been times in this community in which we did an EIR for one house. It was actually a case of that. And, you know, over the years, between the state law and how the city's been applying SEQA, it's been less and less part of the process. And so we're now to this situation, which basically the SEQA analysis is the only thing that, unless the city takes some other approaches, I'll talk about that, that we're gonna have to even calibrate this to something that isn't going to be a disaster. I mean, that's the problem is that's why I said that because I see a possibility of this not working and being entitled, they have the rights under the law to do these things, and we're gonna be left with a situation that's just not gonna work.
Yeah.
And, and, and you've got multiple, you know, this is not unusual because I've, I've worked on a number of shopping centers. And there are multiple, you know, owners here. You have folks on the ground and then there have leaseholders too. You know, so you've got multiple players here. And we have at least three key parties, the Taylors, the folks own the mall and the, and the Riviera Derry people and their developer. All these people have different objectives, not necessarily the city's objectives, you know, that they have monetary objectives. And to get all this to work is, is, is not easy and they have competing interests. And I, I've had situations in my projects in which I'd have a competing project. And they would be doing everything possible to make my project not happen. So I wasn't that surprised by that letter and I don't know if that was their motivation. Nobody wants to be the, the second project in. They don't want to be the one following up because sometimes like on impacts on traffic, you know, I get to use up all the capacity. I had that situation. So they tried to, they wanted to use up all the capacity. It was on the road system and I would have to pay for all the improvements. And, and that's what's missing from here is how, how this is going to be equal between all these parties.
Right.
It, it, usually in a specific plan process, you can work through all that stuff, but, or having a master developer, which we don't have here. You don't have one party, you know, arbitrating all the different players here. You don't have that either. So unfortunately, you know, that, this is a problem. And, you know, and, and you've got these different owners and, you know, and, and you've got ground leases that have different expiration dates and, you know, it's, this could be a real, real mess.
Yeah, I mean, it's already a planning mess, you know, the city's hands are tied with how we got here. The letter you refer to, referred to questions about the assumptions that Kennedy Wilson team was making as it relates to access on the Taylor family project. And there was a sentence there, I mean, it's a few paragraphs, but it basically says that the idea that you can enter the Sears development through State Street, that there will be access through our development to your private development is essentially not, not true. And there's that assumption that's gonna happen in the, the, the Kennedy Wilson project. So we're talking not just the looks of buildings, right? It's much deeper than that. It's about how people move in a plaza that right now, if you went to it, there's a thousand people doing a bunch of different things right now, whether it's shopping or eating or, or, you know, anything that happens, going to various different places. With these developments, the mall will remain in the middle, all those, you know, the stores that are still around or the arts or the studios, you know, whatever's there. What's gonna happen? These are people's neighborhoods now. These would be their communities. And so it really matters how people can move around. And if you've got two developers who are not going in it with an approach of how do we work together because they're worried about money, time, impacts and what the city's gonna want out of them? It's a, it's a terrible situation for a piece of property that is very big. But we're not talking out in the middle of nowhere. This isn't the Glen Annie Golf Club, which has its own issues. This is already an urban area. And so I think that's the challenge that, that's going on here. Can you talk, John?
And Josh, one of the things that people, I really think the community needs to understand is the scale, this stuff. It, it, it's, you know, it's really hard to understand the scale because it is, it, it, these, it, it's sort of misleading, honestly, when you see the designs of these things. And we're talking an area that would be, if it was placed in downtown, you know, six to ten city blocks.
Wow.
Okay, this is not a small area. And they, and the Sears site itself is like three city blocks. And that's one of the things that's, get back to the scale. Think, think of Paseo Nuevo with, without, you know, a street that goes in between, you know, but basically two plus blocks is what you have physically from a linear distance along the side of, uh, next to the freeway with nothing breaking in that massive, I mean, that, that, that is a very amongus, very, very, very massive facade. Which, which is where, where my concerns are is this is so out of scale of how things have been done in Santa Barbara. And it doesn't have to be that way. That's, that's what drives me crazy. It doesn't have to be like that because if you just broke it up into, you know, into more individual buildings and put a circulation network, both pedestrian and streets and, and bikes and, you know, Paseos, it'd be very much like something we'd have downtown. And then the intensities can work if it's all tied together with a network that works, but, you know, we don't have that unless, and then this is where I, I, I think the only thing that the city can do is sort of look at sort of historically how cities developed, especially Santa Barbara, you know, they had an historic grid adopted back about the time and it became a city. They, they actually hired Mr. Hagley, I think it was, to go out there and lay out the city. And, you know, there were just, you know, then, then, I mean, we didn't have streets. It was basically for carriages and horses, but, you know, but they had the sixty, seventy and eighty foot State Streets, eighty feet and Haley is, I think, sixty and, you know, or, or seventy. And, you know, so they, they'd laid out basically a network of streets and the buildings came and filled in over time. Here we have a situation where we have some buildings already that, you know, like the mall part's not going away. At least they surely don't intend to change. I haven't heard them wanting to do anything. But we have no street network that works. Is very much unconnected to anything. And that's part of the problem with that whole area of town and why everybody has to be on State Street all the time. And why that's, traffic's always been historically a bad, bad on State Street as long as I've lived here. So, you know, it's not gonna get any better with these projects. So what would needs to do at least at a minimum is create a street block and circulation network with Paseos and, and, you know, and then let them fill it in. We really have little control anymore about, you know, as long as they meet our requirements. And we can maybe, you know, through the architectural review process, make it look better and more Santa Barbara, but that's where we're at now. And so my suggestion is a city, you know, really has to go through the process now since they can't get a specific plan. Does at least create the street network that it works with, which, you know, means the city has to take action to create the network between all these blocks because they're not gonna volunteer it to the other guy or vice versa. So, you know, public right of ways need to be created in a block and circulation network that works for these two projects and whatever, how this whole area emborfs over time. And that, that's where we're at now. And that's why I was, you know, during the planning commission, I asked, you know, Jessica Grant, which is a very, very talented person, how is this all gonna work? And I asked about whether these streets are gonna be public or private. And unfortunately, the city's taken the position, oh, it's sort of a private problem, you know, which is not gonna work. You can't, unless they're willing to grant each other access rates. And well, when Ernie Hahn did the shopping center, he did that because he, you know, gave people different rights to different pieces. And there were easements and all that, but all that's collapsing with these things, these ground leases expiring. So, you know, the city needs to basically go through the process of working, you know, first offering, you know, basically taking, taking control of at least the circulation network and using the infrastructure that goes in, in, in the streets anyway. So at least you can get sort of the foundational elements of this area to work. Between that and the SEQA process, that's basically all, all, all we can do at this point, which is, it is back to, you know, this is not what we would, you know, I, I think everybody's looking at this situation. This is not, you know, not what we wanted to see.
Yeah. So just to provide that context, and then I'll ask you your opinion. I mean, one could make the argument, the city should have started to work on a specific plan years ago. They knew that eventually these local developers would come forward with a housing plan and the, the city wanted housing there. However, when the city finally decided to seek grant funding for a specific plan, one point one million dollars, it was supposed to happen. It was supposed to be routine. It was recommended. It was the number one priority from this state grant funding pool of various projects. And when it got to the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments meeting, I know the city planners felt blindsided because all of a sudden, the chair at the time, Doss Williams, started to advocate against the city getting this funding. And I, I know what caused so much bad blood there was the, the, the planners walking into that meeting. Or I think they knew the day before because there was a sub-regional meeting and they got wind there that there was problem. But they felt as though, wait a minute, everything's going in this direction. And then we have somebody who's not even a representative of the city of Santa Barbara, who's in a county position at that time. Basically say, you've waited too long, the design review boards take too long with stall projects, sort of blaming the planning, the planning department and the design review boards on the lack of housing and just said no. And that allowed the Taylors, who by the way, had submitted their application, as I recall, the day before that meeting to lock it in. And it felt like, whoa, there's a little bit of a behind the scenes maneuver happening to undermine the city. And so there was no funding for the specific plan and the city, I guess, could, could have tried or, you know, there's a number of reactions it could have done, but the bear was sort of caught, everyone was sort of just shocked. And so that's why we don't have, we have a situation where there would have been one point one million dollars for this effort. And then just gone because of, you know, what I think no is, you know, behind the scenes politics that was, that was happening for that. So that, that's how we get here to this situation. John, feel free to chime in on that history if you have something to add or change, but.
No, I, 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 I think that, you know, that's sort of all, all past tense and, you know, it's unfortunate, but we, we have to, to understand that we, we need to move on. It is, it's really where I come from, you know, you know, I mean, I've been, been doing specific plans since the eighties. So, so, you know, and, and it would have been, would have been a better scenario.
Do you think there's a way?
It's not the scenario we have, you know, and then we have to move on from that.
Right. Do you, well, we have to move on, but we also have to live with the result of that, that, that public policy decision. But do you think, you know, you have Riviera Dairy local, you have the Taylor family. If you can't get a specific plan that requires this kind of bigger picture planning, do you think there's any way, is there any personality in town? Is there any, somebody, you know, group of leaders in the city that could bring these two together and say, you are gonna have a much better result if we can work on this together? Is that still a possibility or are we just gonna have a race to?
I, I, I would hope so, but back to, I don't, I, I can't like, you know, I mean, you do have, it is, you know, we have council districts now. So, I mean, there is, there is a, a council person that is, but that, you know, the, the way the city works, it's not necessarily, you know, he, 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 he can try to facilitate it, but, but it does take, you know, four votes to get anything to happen. And that's a whole nother conversation. That's honestly, that's something, you know, you know, I worked on all sides of, of the development, you know, as an applicant, as a community development director, all these different sides of it. The one thing I noticed is, you know, being up on the dais is, it's, it's trained to get that consensus of at least in the case of the city council and the plan, you know, for people, you know, the, the, getting that institutional momentum is very hard to do. You know, it just, it's interesting. It's something I didn't really recognize when I was on all the other sides of that equation. As the, the, getting consensus and getting them to agree and to take charges is, is, is always, you know, it, it, it's something I, I, it's something I've learned from this process. So, no, I, I honestly don't, I, I think it's, it's a case of the city itself as a institution needs to basically, you know, this is something, this is not, cities at some point in time over my career and before that have changed from being planning the city to processing projects. And, and that's unfortunate. And, and the, the city here is no different than cities elsewhere around California to work with, but that's just how this business has changed. And so have cities to be proactive. But now it's even harder to be proactive because the state now is, you know, basically, you know, oh, well, that's nice, but we can waive that and we can waive this. It, it, it's getting harder and harder to actually have a city actually even, even, even do its own destiny. So it's very problematic.
Now, now you have seen the Macy's, the Taylor family project as well. What do you think of that project? That was sort of the first one that got a lot of attention. It was out first. They've had some meetings. We've seen the renderings, the drawings. It's very big. It's much bigger. You know, they were out first and then all of a sudden the other people come, you know, chasing. But what do you think of?
Both of them are big projects. We'll just start with that. And the Taylor project, it, it even goes into a higher format. The Taylor project actually, of the two, is actually closer in line with Santa Barbara's way of doing things, which is you've got a city block. And basically the Taylor project is a tad larger than our forty, what, four hundred and forty by four fifty city blocks. It's sort of Santa. Forty, what, four hundred and forty by four fifty city blocks. It's sort of Santa Barbara size city block. That, that was originally mapped with the original grid. It's a tad bigger than that, but it's close, you know, and that was presented as part of the presentation. So basically it's a city block. And they took that city block and they have busted it up. And I think it's like six buildings. There's six buildings. So it was Paseos tying together and it's open enough that the public has interaction. So it's much more in keeping. With Santa Barbara. I think it's, it's intensity and scale is probably going to be shocking to the community. But at least it's got some of the basic DNA Santa Barbara, which the. Sierra site does not. I mean, I mean, if the Sierra site was more in line with, you know, that kind of connectivity, both pedestrian and circulation. It would be much better than it is right now, you know, being proposed. And I think that's the one thing I would hope that the. The message from the planning commission, other, other technical issues, affordable housing issues and things like that. That they got that message. That it's just, it's, and then they heard that from the architectural review board from like Richard Six and other members. It's like. It's the mass and the lack of connectivity and like, I mean, I remember some of the plant, uh, some of the. ABR member saying, well, how do you get from over here to here? Oh, you gotta go down this corridor and then down this elevator and through this. Paseo and down another corridor. And it's just not, that's just not how things are built in this town. And it's, it is, it's a form and type that we don't have. And, and, and then, you know, it, it, it's something you will see in North Dallas where I grew up. And, you know, yeah, and, and you will see it in, in very, very suburban, urban things like Irvine and Costa Mesa. And, you know, I just, it's just not Santa Barbara, which I think, I think it's, you know, but unfortunately. It meets our zoning code. So, I mean, that's, that's very problematic.
Well, the Taylor family is working with Brian Cornell and his team. So it's a local architect. Whereas Kennedy Wilson, they have their architects and they're not local. Um, and I don't think, um, they have any sort of. Subcontractors or local, I don't know, but certainly when they were giving their presentation, it was very much, um. An out of town sort of presentation, you know, they weren't pronouncing names of streets correctly, that sort of thing. And, you know, they were kind of dismissive of the. Gas stations on the Cumbra and the veterinarian clinic, which isn't even there anymore. And, 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 and you can sort of tell the. The culture of the architect and what they know and what they don't know. And it's reflected in the proposed, you know, mass wall of. Apartments facing, you know, Kyrial and, and highway, highway one O one. And so I think that's definitely a, a challenge is, you know, you've also got. Architects who, you know, they, I don't want to say cookie cutter, but you know, it's, it's a style that is works in other places better than it does in Santa Barbara.
But the thing is, you use, you see the Taylor project. Taylor project has some of the same physical construction technology. Situations. They have a number of situations. They have podiums with wraps, you know, if you actually get into the details. But they're broken up into, there's one over here and one over there and another one over here. And they sort of, you know, then there's sort of a bottom floor network that. The garage works together. The other one isn't that. It's basically two, you know, two. Parking structures and then buildings wrapped around. And, and, and in fact, there's no, uh, there's no connectivity or porosities, is the term is used. That allows people to get in and out, both public and people that are staying there. And there's other issues that have project is sort of, so like. You know, and there's things that came out and, and, you know, I didn't, you know, it was very shocking to me when I went and went to their open houses like. Oh, all of a sudden we now know there's a fault here. Which goes right through the Sears building, by the way. It's like, okay, well, yeah, which was definitely in the question is, and that's what, with the kind of stuff, the, the sequel process, you would. Get all that. I don't know. Is there a fault from the Taylor project? I don't know. You go back to, you know, we, we need to find all these technical things out. Too for the whole area. And, you know, it's not just wastewater sewer and circulation. It's, it's all the other stuff. So. We make sure this has, you know, works long term.
So the Hope School District, the superintendent was there and talked about, whoa, this is going to be a big impact to our schools. We're going to need twenty eight new classrooms. What do you think of that? I mean, I know that's not specifically the role of.
Unfortunately, in this particular area. The state is, is, you know, and, and, and don't want to bam out the state, but the state has created a situation and then through. How the address of schools and development is basically you pay your, your, your impact fee and. That's it. The fact that the impact fee doesn't. Come up with enough money to really deal with the impacts. Yeah, that's, that's, that's what Sacramento set up and it's been there for a long time. So I would hope. That in, in the case here, the both of these parties would sit down and, and go that next step. Which is try to come up with some additional capital to help the school district. But unfortunately, you know, they could also just say, no, yeah. But this is back to being a good, a good member of the community and. And, and, you know, that's, that's another, you know, a, another piece of this equation, which is very, very problematic and, you know. The, you get that with every project now. And, and, you know, it's just, that's the nature of, you know. The, the impacts on the school, what'd be identified from a secret process, but the, the basically the mitigation always is. Pay the fee. And that my statute is considered mitigation that takes it out of the impact category. So. We just, that's just how that is. And unfortunate, it's unfortunate. Now, the only question I have, because I've had this situation, you know. I've had proposed moving a school district boundary to solve a problem like this. Which is, oh, I've got a school district over here that's got capacity and this particular project's in a school district. That has no capacity and is overcapacity. Why don't we move the law? I don't know if that's an answer to this question or not. I have no idea about that, but that's something that the county superintendent of schools gets involved. And there can be things and, and that's, I have a project that's being proposed right now to move a school best, just a boundary because of that, but. But that, that's not, I don't know if that would work in this case or not, and whether we have that kind of imbalance of. With this project sort of sitting at the, at the boundaries or something.
I don't even know what other elementary schools we have in that area, but you know, Peabody, I guess, and Roosevelt is kind of far away, but, um.
I don't know if that way, yeah, I, and I'm just putting that out there, but, but yeah, now the state, that's just something that's. So inherent in how the states done things. And then part of it was that they thought that when they were. Doing an allocation of property taxes, the, the schools are getting more. And, you know, and post redevelopment, we can talk about that. In fact, I should like to talk about the post redevelopment in California.
Yeah, okay. We'll talk about that in a second. Maybe we'll lead into it with this affordable housing question I want to ask you about. Of course. Both of these projects have below market units as part of their development. However. It's not a lot, right? And by a lot, meaning we're talking about more than a thousand units. I believe the Taylor family has less than ten percent that project. The other one does have twenty percent. Um, but bottom line is most of this construction is, most of these apartments are going to be very expensive. By the time their bill, who knows, six thousand, seven thousand, eight, I mean, we just don't know by the time they're built, because some places already in town are renting for that. Can we talk about the affordability aspect? I know in your roles of planning commission, this comes up all the time. Um, how do you? Increase affordability when we have a thousand units coming to town?
Well, the problem is. When it comes to affordable housing and, and, and in the private sector providing that, and I want to separate. Public sector actions on that is. And I've run the financial formulas for this. To the extent you can, and this is what you'll, you've, you've heard this from probably some others in town like, uh, I forgot the guy's name that. Built the Solterra project, you know. Peter Lewis, Peter Lewis has mentioned this before, is. There is some ability for the market rate housing to sort of. You squeeze them a little bit more so that it's sort of internally subsidizes more affordability. But that's, you know, in, you know, in certain markets, you can get away with that. If not, you basically, what you're doing is just changing the land residual, basically the value of. Of the land. From when you, in you increase the affordability. So, you know, you can do it a little bit. But, you know, I've run these financial models and okay, we move it to this and guess what? You know, the land is worth X because of, because you've got less. Economics coming from the broker, less rent overall. And there's costs with it, running the thing. So, so basically. It ends up being a very complex problem in which. It really comes down, it's the land value gets modified through this, you know, the developers, you know, if it's a developer that isn't the landowner itself. You know, basically they can just basically would have to go back to a, the property or go, well, if I'm doing more affordable, then I. Will only give you less money for the, for the land to do my deal. Cause they're going to still do the deal for the same and the cost of construction and the revenues and, you know, you do this math, giant math equation. But it comes down to, that's the end result. So, I mean, it, it, it just. It's all about the, what the value of land. And the states, unfortunately, with the density, where they extract. You know, set up the density bonus thing. They increase all this, you get all this extra density and bonus. Which just means the land's worth more and the affordability didn't quite match, you know, Sacramento did not help. Honestly, on that side by the, the density bonus provisions, because it actually just increased the value of the land. By, by creating this additional density, you know, it's sort of interesting. They sort of. Created their own problem that one, but, uh, yeah, it is very, very problematic. And that's where I come to. You know, first off, the amount of affordability, you know, the state is in, uh, uh, AB eighteen ninety three. Just lowered how much you can, you know, the maximum you can do now is twenty percent. Separate from the density, but the city can't go and say, hey, we want twenty five. They just took that off the, off of, of the equation. So twenty is. Basically the maximum you can do now. And all that things is basically, you know, the developer's still going to do this project. It just means the land, land has less, less economic value. You know, and that's really where it comes down to. So, you know, if you raise it to forty percent, the land would be worth. And so, you know, it's just how that equation works. And so that's where I get into, you know, the answer is probably. You know, a supply changes things, you know, in those markets, you have a lot of supply and affordability is not as a big a deal. You know, you have that like in Phoenix and other places. And there's like, there are places, there's been a lot of building, you know, rents are actually going down, but. But that's not Santa Barbara. So we, we, you can't, can't expect us to grow our supply. Point in which we're going to lower pricing. So basically. The only other thing that can happen is you get into the other side of the equation, which is the public side. Which is basically getting the, you know, the housing authority to be building more. But they need money to do that. And that gets into what I've been, I, I keep bringing this up and, you know, I, I did have a conversation with, uh, the city manager, Kelly McAdoo. About it a few months ago, uh, with some other folks is, you know. If we go back to using tax increment financing, like they did back in the days of redevelopment, when we did have redevelopment in town. In fact, we had more affordable units built in the time period, we had redevelopment by the housing authority than we've had. And that is how we got most of our affordable housing built in this community is through the housing authority during the redevelopment years. We need to go back to that. And the states, the state has actually. Come up with what's called an enhanced infrastructure finance district, which is their answer. And they even say this, this is their answer to. Replacing redevelopment as far as how you can finance. And I, I've pitched this and it's the same exact techniques. There's a few more carve outs for schools and other things as far as sort of, you know. Who, who doesn't count and that revenue is protected, which was the issue of redevelopment with schools and stuff with Jerry Brown and such, is that basically. If you have some, a real increase in assess valuation, which you would have of these kinds of very large projects like the Macy's and. Taylors, or the Macy's Taylor project and the Sears project. Is the assessed valuation of these sites are going to like just jump significantly. Well, that. Means the city's property tax is going to go up. Their share of the property can go up a whole lot. And the question is, what do you do with that? Is it just sort of drift into the city budget and disappear? Or do you go, hey, we're going to just capture a section of that. And take that money and funnel it into the trust. They take that money in the trust fund and, and then even in the case of, uh, money that's, you know, from, uh, tax increment, you can bond against. Like, and they didn't, that's how we built the parking structures down town is they bonded against that revenue stream, you know. To me, that's the, the best answer this community has, because we're not going to build our way out of it. And we're going to have a whole lot of big projects. I mean, I don't know how many AUD projects I've seen on the commission. There's a whole bunch. Have been entitled but haven't been built. And that's factors that, yeah, other factors like cost of construction and labor and. Financing costs, but there will be a day, all of a sudden, all this stuff's going to show up. And we should capture that. That increased value and be able to take that, put it in the trust fund, bond against it, have the, uh. The folks at the housing authority actually build stuff that's a hundred percent affordable, so we can have workforce housing. And this whole thing's happened over, you know, many years. This was not a created, a problem that was created over a short period of time. I mean. Housing wasn't cheap when I moved here in the eighties, but it has not gotten any, you know, the relationship has gotten worse as far as income to. Housing prices over time. And, and, and that's why we've got that commuter problem. The commuter problem wasn't, we had some of that in the eighties when I moved here, but it has gotten significantly worse. Because, because we haven't acted. I mean, I was involved when we were doing the job housing balance measure back in the eighties, late eighties. Which we adopted, but we didn't, you know, there was an equation there was housing and jobs, but we just completely forgot the housing part. For many, many years. And that's how we got to this situation. So, no, to me, that's the, that's our base. We will be getting a supply. The state's making us do that in any case. And, and, and having supply is a good thing, because it does, does, as Peter Lewis talks about, it does, you do have this move up. Factor. Some people will be moving into new people, you know, move into new units and they will. Vacate what they have in town. That will allow somebody else to move into, you know, there is this whole movement. Thing that does happen when you have supply increases, but, yeah, but, you know, we have a very impacted market, which is you, you have to take. More dramatic steps like, you know, like doing, you know, the old days of redevelopment type processes. To actually solve some of this problem.
This idea of sort of a, you know, two point O redevelopment, funding, uh, property tax increment. Um, that you talked about just now, is this something the city could do or it needs compatibility with? State legislation, uh, when you talk to Kelly McAdoo, I mean, that could happen.
The state has, uh, created the, the allowance for this. And I have a couple like, uh, public sector. City clients, you know, city Ranchacook among us just gone through the process of doing it, not necessarily for affordable housing, but. But that was like a piece of it, but they were doing it for more parking structures and redoing other things in their community, but. Now that it is now something that is allowed and it's something a number of communities are doing. For a while, it was very hard to do because some of the voting requirements were really tough to get through, but that all changed. Over the last twenty years. So it's something's happened, but it's not, you know, it takes effort. And it's not, you know, it's like reform, it's like, you know, there was a lot of effort to form the redevelopment agency back when it was initially formed. And it's that kind of effort, but it would be something that we can do in this community to actually create the economic. Ability to have enough money to make, make at least a, a, a concerted effort towards affordable.
Yeah, I mean, something like that would be tremendous, because as we know, with the redevelopment agency, which was bonded to build the parking. Lots, I think it was twenty percent. with the redevelopment agency, which was bonded to build the parking lots, I think it was 20% went to affordable housing, you know, construction. And we've lost all that since it went away. And the housing stock is so old in Santa Barbara, they don't, no apartments were built or very few over the years. And that gets into the whole rent eviction thing, because you know, people hate the landlords and the property owners for kicking people out to renovate. And you know, and their whole point is these are old buildings. We don't have a lot of housing stocks. So it's kind of all connected.
It is all, basically affordable housing sort of is, is, you know, I'll, I'll put the three little mantras out there. There's, there's books in, in theories on affordable housing, you know, you have supply. You have, which, which is, you know, what we're working on, the state's really pushing the supplies, right? Then you have stability and the rent eviction and rent control and all that's in that whole category of that pillar of stability. And the other is subsidy. And that's what I'm talking about is with the housing authority is the subsidy part. Those are the three basically, you know, you know, pieces of a stool that holds up affordable housing. And it's all three of those. And you basically have to adjust all three. And, and, and we're only doing one of the three, or maybe one and a half of the three. So, you know, we, we need to do more.
John, I want to move off of Cumber Plaza and ask you a little bit about you and your background and all that. But sort of a final word on this, um, you are on the planning commission. So you are a player in this whole conversation to the degree the state allows the cities to be players anymore. What do you want to say to the developers, the parties involved here about a best path forward? And some of the dire consequences that will come from not trying to work together a little bit?
Well, I, I would ask them both to be very, very confident about their developing in Santa Barbara and to really understand the DNA of Santa Barbara, which is, you know, blocks and streets and paseos and buildings of certain architectural elements. If they do that, I think the community will be at least not completely torn. Okay. And, and nobody wants to be a developer and I propose very, very large projects. You don't want to be tarred and feathered. You don't, and, and the Taylors are local. And, and the Riviera Dairy people, I think some of them still live in town. So, you know, now I would hope though you would both understand the context of Santa Barbara. And we would like to keep Santa Barbara special and keep it Santa Barbara, you know, and, and then it, it doesn't mean you can't develop something. It just isn't going to be just cookie cutter performer stuff. It's, it's, it goes to the next level. And that's historically we've gone, always gone to the next level. And I would just hope that they would think about it in that context. It may be a little bit more complicated to do, but, but at the end, it, it, it is what keeps Santa Barbara what it is. And I just hope that they would, you know, think about that. And, you know, there is, there's at least, as I mentioned, there's enough guidance and, and the documents that we have out there. Both, you know, the urban design documents were done for downtown in the nineteen nineties. Uh, and, you know, the recent objective design standards of a large lot, uh, standards. There's enough there that they, they, they should look at that and sort of see how they can make that work. But I think, I think the community could at least accept, they will not necessarily embrace, because it depends on, you know, because there's a member, but there's people in this community that, that change is hard. Okay. And now I understand that, but no, this change is going to happen, good or bad, because of what's happened from the state. Okay. And, and, and it's really a case of can we, can we get it to be Santa Barbara's version of this change? I really hope that's the case and, and.
Is there a scenario, John? That's all really good. Uh, by the way, the really thought provoking. Is there, last thing, is there a scenario where, I mean, I keep hearing cost of construction, insurance, everything's going up. Is there a scenario where, you know, these things won't be built anyway, just because of the amount of money it's going to cost? Or these groups have so much money, they'll make it happen no matter what?
Well, in, well, the, development's always this giant equation, revenue versus cost. And, eh, you know, there are things outside of Santa Barbara going on on the cost side. So that, that, which is not getting better. Okay. We'll just put it that way. And so that loose cost, the revenue portion probably is in a little stable. There are scenarios that somebody might speak that might make it, you know, this scenario, the revenues might actually go down. Have we go to a recessionary, depressionary side of things? So both of those equations going two different directions don't help. And then the financing cost is a big driver. So, but you've got to get all three of those to sort of be in balance into a profitability standpoint before things will actually happen. And we're, it, it, and it depends on where the capital sources these folks draw upon, you know. It depends on what, you know, what kind of return they're looking for, whether institutional money and, and, and the capital markets have a lot to do with it. So, and, and the case of Kennedy Wilson, they're, they're a big entity with lots of economic resources. So I don't know where the Taylors are getting their money from, or if they have that kind of money. But that, that's a little harder for me to just get to that, that, you know, but at the same time, I think if, i- i- if the numbers works, that project will come out of the ground too. I mean, we've got a lot of them, they've been approved. It just, they haven't come out of the ground because there's all the, you know, the number system. So, so it's not going to all happen at once either. So, and these projects take a long time to build. I've got one project that we're near 20 and it's still not done. But it, you know, it's 3,000 housing units and it's very urban. And we got, went through the financial crisis in the middle of it too, COVID. And so, you know, it's the, the, these things worked their way through the process, but i- i- at some point in time, all this stuff will happen. But, uh, you gotta get all those things to line up and they're not lining up a whole lot.
John, I've watched you on the planning commission and, you know, you served time as chair and you're definitely one of the more thoughtful, deliberate commissioners. Let's talk a little bit about your background. Um, I do know your son a little bit, uh, just from reporting Ian Bauckey. And he's quite the, the activist and another smart guy who's doing great things in the community as well. Um, John, take me back in time. How'd you get your start? When'd you come to Santa Barbara? The, the whole story?
All right. Well, first off, I was born in Kansas City, just with a short bike, bike ride from Arrowhead Stadium, you know. It wa- it was a field back then, but, uh, and then, uh, my, my, my parents moved to Dallas, Texas, lived in North Dallas. Uh, spent my, you know, my formative junior high to elementary school years there and then moved to California, to Orange County. Uh, went, went to school in Orange County and then, uh, went to Long Beach State. Was a political science pre-law major, then slowly morphed into being more interested in urban studies. And then led me to transfer from a couple of different schools, ultimately into, you know, the Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, where I got my degree in city and regional planning. And then after that, I worked with, uh, you know, and when I was in school, I worked for the city of Pismo Beach, writing their coastal plan back in the days that there were regional commissions and all, you know, where it was very, very local control. And, and, uh, did their implementation plan and worked for an E I R consultant, writing E I Rs back, back, back when that was a thing. Uh, and then, you know, came out of school at the time of the nineteen eighties recession. And trying to find a job in the, in, in San Luis Obispo in nineteen eighty was very, very har- hard, the, the eighties was very hard to do. Uh, so I was like a lot of kids, I moved back home. So I moved back home and ended up getting a job with the city of Orange. Uh, which, uh, got hired as their special projects person, which was very interesting. Cause I got to be in charge of their historic downtown, involved in revitalizing their historic district. I don't know if you've been to the, the Plaza Historic District in Orange, right down the street from Chapman College. That was what I did along with, I, at that time was also involved in the very large scale uh, planning that Irvine Company was doing on East Orange. It's very, very large scale master development stuff that was going on there. Then ended up going to the city of Seal Beach, which was a city I lived in and I'd actually just moved out of it to become their principal planner. And then, you know, within a couple of, uh, less than nine months, ended up being their community director. Uh, because there was some reorganization and got promoted to that and being, became this, the youngest planning director in, in Orange County. One of the youngest in, in, in the state of California. And then got this offer after being there for just a couple of years by the Dixie family of Long Beach, who owned, uh, lots of holdings in Southern California, one of our California legacy landlords. Uh, to, uh, come to Santa Barbara. And this was like unsolicited, like, hey, John, how would you like to live in Santa Barbara and work for us? And manage the Kohol Lama Ranch, which is known as the Dixie Ranch. Uh, and, uh, work on entitling, uh, this 25,000 acre property for this agricultural cluster development concept, which is still one of the thought process about how to preserve as much property, but using development economics to preserve property. That was what the coastal commission and the county came up with is how to address that at the time. Uh, and, uh, so I came to, uh, came to Santa Barbara in eighty-six to do that. And worked through that process until the nineties, in which, you know, that project ended up being, uh, the rights to that project, as we were in the entitlement pro- uh, process was, uh, purchased by the federal government. For, uh, basically their ability to do additional launching, which, you know, now they're doing even more launching. But Vandenberg Air Force Base. And, uh, so we sold the development rights to them. Was also hired to be an in-house planning consultant. This is one of three or four people. They were developing their own sort of in-house development team. So they did that. Uh, so I consulted a whole bunch of projects that the company was doing outside of, of there. And then they formed their own development subsidiary in which I was vice president of and did a, a major redevelopment of a, a super fund site up in the East Bay of San Francisco called the Hercules Waterfront this week. Uh, and then they've been, then, then in two thousand and five, right before the, the crash, the Dixie family decided to sell all the real estate and get out of the business and, uh, sold the Kohol Lama Ranch, the Dixie Ranch to a hedge fund. Uh, that ultimately ended up in the nature conservancy's hands. But that job involved all kinds of different permutations, including trying to turn the property into a national seashore. Uh, and then dealing with the oil companies of all, I, I, I could probably spend an hour talking just of all the things we did with that, that property. But, but in two thousand and five, they, 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 they basically closed down their operation. And I ended up being, you know, self-employed and, you know, for the last 20 years of had my own firm and worked as a consultant around California. Permanently doing very large scale master development projects. And then been involved in the community since I was here, first as a planning, you know, and, you know, head of the local planning, uh, section of the American Planning Association. Put on the conference in nineteen ninety-five, very involved with Citizens Planning Association back, back in the eighties and nineties. And then when I started having to go to the East Bay, and as I, I mentioned to you earlier, you know, you know, three days a week, I was like up on, up to the crack of dawn to drive to Burbank and fly up there and spend three days and then come back on Thursday night. You know, this is when I had, you know, Ian was, you know, a newborn and, and did that for many, many years.
Yeah.
You know, projects still going and, and I've worked for a number of landlords around Southern California and, uh, but, uh, nothing, nothing in this county since Dixie. Now they've sort of tried not to do things.
You've been in all kinds of different places and positions. So you truly are somebody who can see at 360 degrees all of these issues because you've worked private and community development director and public sector. So that's a great asset to the city. Uh, you, so you finally decided to join the planning commission where you recruited? Or did you just say, hey, that would be?
It's interesting, COVID, and then, you know, and people talk about this, COVID had, had, you know, made people sit around, think about their lives. And honestly, I was at the point in which I was starting to get into sort of a more semi-retirement. But sometimes timing it down, I wasn't doing the travel like I was before. I mean, that, you could not have done it. I'm surprised one of our commissioners, she pulls that one off with all her travel, but you know who I'm talking about. Uh, but, uh, no, it was one of those things of basically a couple of things in my life. I just, I want to focus on, you know, giving back. And I had the opportunity and that's, my, my, my son probably used to want to talk me into it. I was sort of thinking about it and a couple of other, uh, I knew some of the other members of planning commission and off and on, they'd go, hey, John, you should do this. You know, and so, you know, i- i- it's been an interesting experience. I do have to say that.
Well, well, John, it's been a tremendous conversation. I really appreciate your, uh, downloading of all this knowledge and analysis and insight and ability to explain the complicated things that are happening at Luccumber Plaza with the issue of housing. And, uh, broader sort of how Santa Barbara is, uh, is changing and how we need to figure out a way to change in the most positive way possible. So thank you so much for your time. And, um, you know, I, I, I may not always be in the room on those Thursdays, but I'm watching you.
You're watching.
Through YouTube. So, so thanks a lot. Um, but thanks a lot for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Have a great day.